Call to order, the common council for May 26th, 2020, 6:44. Done the pledge, roll call.
Alder Persons Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Communications from the mayor's office, just that we have gotten a lot of rain lately. There's a lot of atypical flooding issues going on around the city. If you have requested public works to come out by you, they will be getting out to you. They just have a very long list right now. So, we're trying to take care of the ones that are adversely affecting properties, at least as we can tell, first, and then moving on. I realize that everyone considers theirs to be the most important, but we're trying to get to all of them. So, just a little patience, Ryan's catching up pretty good. That's all I have. Public comments. Got two sheets. Mr. Cuspa.
Good evening, your honor.
Hi.
And Aldermen. I'm here representing the Forest Glen subdivision. I'm the HOA president, and this is in regards to the additional building that is going to be proposed for building for the Will Rose project apartments. And we, as a subdivision, have no opposition. Gloria Bassi, who owns that property, has been a good neighbor to us. The developer, Bill Carrity, who's also here today, has been great in keeping an open line of communication with us to make sure that we know step by step and the management of the actual construction. The Altius Building Company has been great working with me and contacting me and also me working out problems with him. And we've had a few, but they've been worked out, mainly traffic-related matters, but that should be resolved when the first building is completed. And the second side, when that goes up, that's probably going to affect more of the construction traffic, more on Martin Drive. We, on Glencov Court, had a lot of activity with construction vehicles coming in and out, and it was a concern of the neighborhood that we were going to have a problem with debris, which we did, but it was cleaned up daily. And it continues to be cleaned up daily because of the Altius Company that's there to take care of it. So, we're not in opposition. We're for the expansion of the project. And really, I have no further comment. Do you have any questions of me at all?
We can't interact with you during this, so we're just kind of listening.
Okay, just giving my opinion. Okay, well, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolton.
This is for the public hearing, so we're for the common council agenda.
This is for the common council agenda, yeah.
Okay, so Resolution 41?
Yes, this would be appropriate.
Okay, Deb Bolton, West 186, South 75, 43, Kingston Drive. I'm here to ask you to bring out, I think it's Resolution 41, the resolution with regards to the public comments, to bring that out of the consent agenda, bring that out to be voted on its own and discussed on its own. I understand it may have been discussed in a cowl. I wasn't there for that, didn't review that, but I'd like to have it discussed here. I have a major concern with the whole three minutes. I think that is too short, in general, to make a blanket statement to limit your citizenry. You know, if we care about what you have to say, as long as it's three minutes or less, I think is the wrong message to send. I have spoken with some people who maybe have had more of a pay attention to the cowl, and I believe that some comments have come up on that with regards to, well, exceptions can be made, the Aldermen can always vote to increase that or to give the person more time, but that method, that the policy to get to that is unclear. I have had situations, just in the past year where I have been here, and I do not feel that I've rambled, wasted time, but I had a lot of points to make. And at three minutes, I was cut off and told to go to my chair. No one offered me the extension of, would you like another minute? Take another minute, finish what you have to say, Ms. Bolton. Nobody offered me that. So, it's not clear, it's not uniformly done. So, I mean, if that's, so I believe one, let's extend that time. I mean, personally, I'd like to say to 10. I get the idea, we don't want someone to sit up here and filibuster. Maybe 10 is too long, maybe five is enough. But if we are going to make it be known that if you come up here with a presentation, bullet points, clear, concise, and you've got something to say, then ask us for more time, even if it's to take that little half sheet of paper and put another box on it. Put another box. I think I will need more time, can I please have it? I think I'll need five more minutes, as simple as that. You know, I'm going to ask you once in a while to do it. Most likely, I'm going to ask you once in a while. Are the majority of the speakers going to do it? No. They're going to come up here and they're going to say, I don't like this, I don't want it, I'm upset for A, B, and C, or I'm upset also, I want you to know I'm upset for all the same reasons that that person said. And they're going to go back and sit down. So, I don't think increasing it to five is going to have you guys sitting here till nine o'clock at the common council meeting. As long as you guys can behave amongst yourselves, we'll get out of here. So, on that point, please bring it out, discuss it, consider increasing that three minutes a little bit. And if consideration will be made to extend people more time when they're not filibustering you, but they have valid points and you want to hear the rest, make it more obvious if that's available. Thank you.
I still wanted to say you're over your two minutes, but...
Moving forward, public hearing.
To consider the petition of Reno Berg of Pagaro LLP to rezone the vacant property described as tax key number 2283.999.004, located on Crowbar Drive, from A1 Agricultural District to RC1 Country Residence District, for the purpose of allowing a possible future land division on the property.
Thank you. This hearing tonight is for rezoning that was mentioned, from A1 Agricultural to an RC1 Country Residence District. This is located just west of the Mesquigo Lakes, excuse me, the lakes that, the new Jewel development on the west side of Lake Tenoon, excuse me. This is a new development there. As part of the owner of this land, who Pagaro, the applicant Reno Berg is working with, was the same person who owned the same land across the road where Jewel did his development. As part of the rezoning, a comprehensive land use plan change is not being requested. So, right now, they're world density residential, and that's not changing. It's really just changing, allowing a slightly smaller lot and allowing a slightly narrower width. And the reason they're asking for this is because it's in such close proximity to the sewer that is in that neighborhood across the street. It was determined by the utilities department that sewer should be extended, most likely, here. The developer didn't really question that, but then they just kind of said to have sewer come here, you know, there's a cost with that, that's developer burdened, that four lots is needed to make this happen. Driving by these lots will look no different than any of the lots in the area, in my opinion. The zoning they're asking for actually allows lots down to 80,000 square feet in size. They'll have to be at least 89,000 because of that world density residential, because the comp plan and the zoning have to match when it comes to land use decisions. So, the only comment that we received on this tonight, and I'll pass this out to everybody, is basically a letter from the actual developers. Let me pass it on.
Thank you, sir.
This was also emailed to everybody, so hopefully everyone saw it already. Mayor, do you want me to read this?
Please, yeah.
Okay. So, Mayor Pittfalsky and Alder Persons, "Good evening. My name is Reno Berg, a partner of Pagaro LLP, and I'm also affiliated with Remax Legacy Mesquigo. I would like to provide a brief background on the proposed development. In September 2018, the land across the street from the proposed development was sold to Community Holdings LLC and is now the Waters of Lake Tenoon subdivision. I was the realtor who listed that property for the Hoult brothers, who also own the land for the proposed development. I had no involvement in the actual development of the Waters of Lake Tenoon. That developer was required to extend sewer to their subdivision in order to obtain the number of lots desired. Consequently, when discussions were held with the City of Mesquigo personnel regarding the proposed development, it was emphasized that the extension of the sewer would be required by the developer to serve these lots. The City of Mesquigo has conducted a study to ensure that there was adequate capacity of the sewer system for these additional lots. Based on the additional cost of extending the main sewer line plus laterals for each lot, it was necessary to request that the nine-plus acres be developed into four lots with sewer, as opposed to three lots with mound systems. Therefore, that is the purpose of the public hearing and the request to change from the zoning from A1 Agricultural District to RC1 Country Residence District. Should you have any questions or require any additional info, please contact me. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Reno R. Berg of Pagaro."
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard on this moment, on this issue? Hearing none. I'll consider that public hearing closed. Moving on to the next one.
To consider the petition of Justin Kepler, AG Agriculture, on behalf of the Bossy Family Trust, to grant a zoning amendment to the existing PD 42 Bossy Plan Development District for the purpose of allowing additional multifamily units and alterations to setbacks and/or offsets for property known as tax key numbers 2198.160.001, 2198.160.002, 2198.160.003, and
Thank you. So, this request is for a plan development amendment. This project has been in front of the council a couple different times over the past few years. For those of you who've been here a long time or been listening for a long time, it started out as a bunch of smaller multifamily buildings, and over the years, kind of shrunk to two larger, compact footprint, larger buildings. The most recent major approval, that's really the backbone of what's there proposed today, is 90 apartment units. It originally was a 50-unit building, which is under construction now, known as Phase One, and it was a second building, known as Phase Two, that was an additional 40 units with a future clubhouse. There was a review by the Plan Commission and Council, I believe it was last year, for what was called a non-substantial change determination. What the developer wanted to do at that time, because of some changes to the interior of the building, they basically said, we want to have, instead of 50 and 40, we want to do 51 and 39. So, they basically said, we're taking a unit from the smaller building, moving it to the bigger building, just because of the interior layouts, it made sense with the layout of the building. That was approved at that time, so that's kind of where we sit today. And then, as part of this request, the developer has been doing pre-sales for their building, and they found out via their pre-sales and other things in the market, that one-bedroom apartments are way more marketable than they thought in a higher demand forum. So, they are, have kind of looked at their plans, looked at their building layouts, and said, can we, in building number two, Phase Two, reduce, take away some of the two bedrooms, and try to convert those into two one-bedrooms, or if one area was just like a kind of a wasted, empty space, they're adding some one-bedrooms, there's what they're proposing. So, the request is really adding six additional units to their proposal. So, originally, it was 90 units, they're asking for 96 total right now. Under the current plan development and the density that the site is allowed, the site was allowed 90 and some fraction of a unit, so they were right where they were allowed to be before. As part of a plan development, the ordinance does allow the council to grant up to a 10% density bonus. So, it would be additional nine units. They're asking for seven, six units, which ends up being a 7% density bonus. And like I said, their sole reason was the idea of trying to fill this niche for these one-bedrooms. And as part of it, they do have, they're making a very, very minor footprint change to the building in one corner, just to facilitate the interior layout. To the naked eye, no one on the outside would ever know they're changing the building. It's very minor. But because they're adding additional units, the planning concern was additional parking. So, as part of the whole site change, too, then, they are also asking for a reduced setback. The normal setback is 40 feet. When the original development was proposed for Unit One, they actually already asked for a 30-foot setback for Building Number One, which they received from the council, and they were going to keep Building Number Two at 40, just because they didn't need the 30. Now that they're trying to accommodate more parking for these additional six units, they're asking that Building Two also be reduced to a 30-foot setback from Janesville Road. So, it will look the exact same setback that Building Number One has. So, if you look at Building Number One, it gives you a good perspective. So, as part of that, they want to reduce the setback. So, the two really things in front of the council are the increased density of that bonus of six units and the reduction of the setback, so both buildings have the same setback. As far as comments go, I received one phone call today from Tim Kitcher at S66W15060 Woodland Place. His comment was, he thinks the unit count should be left as is, and he is not in favor of any three-story buildings in the city. And then, I received an email, which I passed out, and I'll read that, too. This is from Scott Frederick, he's the president of the Lyndale Villas Condo Association. These are the condos that are located immediately north of this development. So, it says, "I am writing to you in regards to the public amendment hearing pertaining to the Will Rose apartment development on Janesville Road. I speak in my capacity as condo association president of Lyndale Villas, which is located on the corner of Janesville Road and Martin Drive. Our property basically borders the northeastern boundary of the proposed development. I would like to state that from the onset of the development, the entire Willows property, Gloria Bassi and Bill Carrity have kept me informed of all their plans and progress for the property. I can say that they have gone above and beyond to keep me informed, so that I can inform our owners of what is transpiring and that the expectations of, and what the expectations of the project are. In short, they have been a perfect neighbor, if you will. It is my understanding that they wish to increase the number of units in the second building without changing to the footprint and seeking to have a building a few feet closer to Janesville Road. As a representative of our association, we stand in support of the proposed changes, and we have no objections to the proposal. I ask that you and whomever is a member of the deciding committee take my comments into consideration and support the request of the amended proposal. Please feel free to contact me for further insight, questions, or comments. Thank you, Scott Frederick, President, Lyndale Villas Condo Association."
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
I just want to know the location of this, I don't understand what the location is exactly. This is north of the building that's being built, or?
Yeah, so Janesville Road kind of runs...
Is where the white building is right now, that we're tearing that down?
It would be, so you have the existing building that's under construction. And as you kind of go northeast, there's the old, the old home, farmhouse. It would be on the other side of the farmhouse. The farmhouse would eventually go down for a clubhouse, so it'd be on the opposite side of the farmhouse from the existing building that's under construction, so kind of northeast.
I got it, I got it. And the question, so right now, the one that's already existing is 30 feet or 40 foot?
The one that's, that's under construction has a 30-foot setback already, they're asking to mirror it on the second building.
And this was supposed to be a 40, and originally the other was supposed to be 40?
Yeah, they just didn't ask for a waiver, because they just didn't need it. They had enough space, but because of the wetlands kind of pinch this area, and because they have to add a few additional parking stalls outdoor, that's why they're asking for the waiver now.
And then, the other thing, they have to add extra parking spaces, you said?
Yeah, they, the Plan Commission did review a site plan and approve it. I don't have the exact parking numbers offhand, but it was, the Plan Commission was comfortable with the additional, it was a mix of some outdoor and some indoor.
Okay. I just wanted to verify the location, I wasn't exactly sure, by looking at this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard on this matter? So, please come forward, name, give your name, address.
Deb Bolton, West 186, South 75, 43, Kingston Drive, Mesquigo. I'm speaking against this. Now, this bit of information did not have anything about the green space, but green space is the, you know, I tend to plant my flag on, intended to tie on here. I bet they need to move the building 10 feet forward, so that they can add more parking towels, I mean, in a rough blush. They're eating up green space, they're eating up green space to add more parking. My suspicion is, just being that, that this is a planned development, this did not have a lot of green space, and we can't sacrifice that. So, I'm actually speaking against this typical builder bait and switch. This development was proposed, this development was hashed out, they worked for quite a long time, I'm sure, with planning development, spent a lot of time with the planning department, spent a lot of time with you. You've done this, you've discussed it, you've hashed it, you were probably a little uncomfortable with passing it the first time, but it got passed. And now, they're coming back and asking for more. The deal was made, the deal was struck, there's no need to give them more. And with regards to the discussion of a plan development, and yes, they can ask for it, and yes, you can approve it, that's true, they can ask, I can ask for all sorts of things, too. It is within your power to approve a density bonus, it is not your obligation to. It's your obligation to consider what's in it for the city. Those density bonuses, plan developments, the whole purpose behind those is, let's do something non-traditional, because, something outside the box, because it brings so much value to the city and to the community, that we are willing to step outside our normal cookie cutter scenarios. What value to the city is six more single-bedroom apartments? What value to the city is another parking lot? If a builder cannot provide to us, what's the value to the city? What is the value to the community to pave over more of this land, near wetlands, I'm hearing, not in one, but near one? What is the value to the city? Clearly, there's going to be value to the developer, they're going to make more money on rent. They wouldn't have built this property in the first place if they weren't going to make money. So, we don't need to worry about the builder, we don't need to be considerate of them losing their income. We need to put the city and the residents and the community first. What value does this bring to us to allow them to pave over more of this with a parking lot? If you can't answer that, or if the builder can't answer that, I encourage you, when this comes before you, for an actual vote, to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to be heard? Mr. Carrity.
My name is Bill Carrity, and I represent the Bossy family, and to their regret, they can't be here this evening, but I think it's, nobody else is here either. So, we are, as you may know, very busy building, Building A. And just as a bit of a backdrop, Building A will be ready for occupancy, looks like August 1st. We've had some setback as a result of the whole C-19 problem, and, but it hasn't been particularly detrimental. However, we are in the period of lease-up right now, and have found that there's probably more call for single-bedroom units than what we had originally thought, and that our original market projections had anticipated. So, we would like to be given the opportunity to reconfigure with very minor reconfiguration of Building B, the second building, which, by the way, is 480 feet to the east of the first building, Building A. So, there's quite a bit of separation between the two buildings. And I guess I, I don't know that I really have to spend a lot of time with regard to discussion about our site plan, but this really is a unique project. These are not twin buildings, they have different architecture, they use very high-quality materials, a lot of separation between buildings. And as a result of that separation between buildings, we have a situation where all of the open space is quite visible to the residents and to the city of Mesquigo. And I will tell you that we have, I think that the tax key numbers were mentioned here earlier, we have a total on that entire triangular parcel of approximately 14.4 acres. And of that, we have 8.15 acres in open space. And that accounts for 57% of the entire acreage is going to be perpetually preserved in parkland. It'll be highly visible to the City of Mesquigo, because you don't have a situation where you have cookie cutter buildings that are lined up one right after the other that obscure the open space. Yes, we are asking for more units to do that, but again, our rationale is because of, because of market conditions. So, we'd like to move forward with our second phase, we're not sure if we're going to build that this year. With these kind of buildings, you usually, we've had some setbacks because of the virus. We may do this in 2021, and because we would like to be under roof, if at all possible, by the time that the snow flies, because you just simply can't do the interior finishing of the building without, without being under roof and heated in the state of Wisconsin. So, I will tell you this, that the open space is significant. As I said, there's 57% of the entire parcel, you don't get subdivisions that have 57% green space. We have stormwater management ponds, we have some wetlands that we are totally preserving, we have some uplands that we are totally preserving, all done very respectfully around our adjoining neighbors, and I think you heard the email and the, and Mr. Cuspa from the adjoining subdivision, say that they, that they were pleased with their plan because of the way that we have organized our site. In that open space, we propose, when we build the second building, we propose walking trails. We would like to do, the potential for, we'd like to have the potential for a community garden, which is very unique. We, we have removed all the dead and dying ash trees that have occurred throughout the parcel, whenever we could operate unfrost this last winter. And, and we really feel that, insofar as the setback is concerned, that it's a very minor modification, one which can be very easily experienced, if you will, whenever you drive past the first building. The first building has 30-foot front setback, and because we wanted to provide for more parking for six more residents, that would benefit the city by being consumers in the City of Mesquigo, down in your downtown area, and that we wanted to make sure that we had indoor parking, which we provided for, together with outdoor parking. So, we do feel that we have met the threshold for a bonus type of treatment, and we feel that 30-foot setback is, is well-founded on the needs for our development. So, respectfully ask that you consider giving us that 7% bonus, and wish, of course, that we had done this right up front, but life is a, is a bit of a learning experience at times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing there's no one else besides staff here, I will call this public hearing closed. Moving on to consent agenda. Can I have a motion for, well, I guess we...
Read it.
Yeah, read them all separately. Approval of the common council minutes for May 12th, approval of operators licenses, approval of Resolution 041, 2020, resolution to amend the procedure regarding public comment during common council meetings, resolution 042, 2020, acceptance of proposals submitted by Triton Contracting for the Old Town Hall improvements, resolution 043, 2020, approval of QuickTrip Developers Agreement, approval of Resolution 044, 2020, approval of QuickTrip LLC Stormwater Management Practice Maintenance Agreement, approval of Resolution 045, 2020, approval of Mesquigo School Apartments LLC Stormwater Management Practice Maintenance Agreement, and approval, and to approve the acquisition contract and authorize signatures for budget-approved expenditures over $50,000, specifically purchase of a boom truck for $192,836.
Rick, I'd like to pull Resolution 041 for council discussion.
Second.
I'd like to pull the, the boom truck, just for transparency purposes.
Anything else? All right, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda as read, with the exception of 041 and the approval of the acquisition contract?
So moved.
Tom and, yeah, we'll give it to Tom and Ty.
By a nose, by a nose.
I'll take the second. I'll take the second. Any discussion on consent agenda, besides the ones ever being pulled? Hearing done, all those in favor of consent agenda, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, 041-2020, resolution to amend the procedure regarding public comment during the common council meetings. So, I'll start this with just, did she leave?
Yeah.
All right. For the public, I had this put out here because there is an inconsistency between the actual resolution and the policy of what they were enforcing. So, I asked the common council to pick one or the other, also letting them know that it's in all likelihood, I will not be enforcing this time limit. So, pick a number, I don't care.
I think she had a good point, just something written in there for the ability to request, approve, ask. Not that I'm saying you're not going to be mayor forever, but if it's written in and you get somebody that wants to stomp it and say, hey, there's no, you don't, you can't get more than three minutes, it certainly, doesn't look like there's an option for, some way for somebody to ask. So, I don't know how we write that in there, but.
I think one of the things we need to do is, I think constituents should have an option to get some time. So, I don't know what the time number is, but maybe we need to figure that out. But, three minutes is not enough, and I think that's the least we can do.
I mean, is there a way to put in some sort of, to get into a game, but, you know, an alderman sponsor, somebody to say, hey, I'd like to extend this person an extra few minutes, obviously still having a cap, but if you say, you know, up to a maximum of 10 with some sort of consent from the board in general, just so that there is something written that gives us the ability to extend it.
Alderman Wolf?
Actually, we've done that already. We can extend, just so you know, we just have to vote on it. We've asked that, we've done it. But I think the person who brought it up brings some good valid points. And I know we talked about this, and I think we're all on the same page, basically, and I appreciate Rick for bringing this to a head. She's pretty informative when she comes up. She gives us some, some good guidelines, and she challenges, sorry, Adam, she challenges us, and sometimes probably makes you work a little harder. But she does, she does, she's concerned about the city. I mean, you know, and I'm using her as an example, because there've been other people. She seems to be get, she, she sometimes educates us, you know, or makes us look at things differently. Maybe it doesn't change our opinion, and maybe it does. But I, but I think that her coming up, expressing her side, that she's not getting enough time, and that's our job, is to give her time. And I understand our selfishness up here, and I think I kind of say we should have a rule or a guideline, and I'm more of a guideline person than a rule person. It's good to have something in place that we can bend and break, and I think rules are harder to break than guidelines are kind of flexible. But her point, and I think we kind of hit on there, is if we, even if we stay with the three and don't go to the five, if they check the box, they're asking for an extension of three, and possibly of us asking to extend it longer. I just hate to go, the more I think about it, go to five and extend it five, and then, everybody's up there asking for 10 minutes immediately, and then there, everything is repeated over and over, and, and I know when people get out there, they got their agendas, and it's all good, and, but a lot of times, it's, it's repeat, you know, repeated something someone else said. So, I think we need to talk about.
Thirty seconds.
Doing something, yeah. Am I done? But we need to, we need to talk about putting a better rule in place. I think this is, this is a good thing we have on the floor.
Alderman Kabaki?
I don't mind the three minutes at the discretion of the person chairing the meeting. I think that offers a latitude that people would like, yet it has a boundary to it, because you put 10 minutes out there, like you said, Rob, everybody's going to jabber for 10 minutes. But I think if it's at the discretion of the person chairing the meeting, I'm, I'm good with that.
And I think that's what we've had, and I like that idea, but the concerns are, as John brought up, it got me thinking, is that, you know, if you're not the mayor, and you're not the alderman, and all of a sudden, we have a switch of everything, and everybody's like, three minutes, you're done. You know, I mean, they'd have to actually set precedents and put a rule in place to change all that. So, if we have it in place, it's, it's kind of what people get used to. So, I agree that three minutes are fine, but I think, like I said, if we had a little box on there, asking for an extension of, of another three minutes, or asking for another two minutes, maybe, that'll put them to five, and then we can make a decision after that, if they say, hey, I need a couple more seconds to finish, or I just have another paragraph or something. I know we're pretty flexible, but I think a guideline is a good thing to have in place.
Yeah, I think her point, too, wasn't so much, sorry, that it's not, it isn't written in there to say, hey, you can extend it. Like, it's hardcoded to say three minutes, so if you decided, like, you were having a bad day, you'd be like, no, it says three minutes, sorry, I'm not going to extend. Just something that lets them know it can be extended if needed.
Alderman?
I believe Robert's rule, he suggests the chair has that power automatically.
I believe I do, or who's ever chairing it.
Second, second to that, I would add this, you know, at the discretion of the council want to override the chair on giving time, I think that should always be part of our procedure, too.
Well, it's your responsibility also. But, one, I, I don't have a problem with the check of adding, and Jeff, you can weigh in on this, I think from a policy standpoint, you're better off having a set time that can't be arbitrarily extended or not, and, you know, if, if somebody has five or 10 minutes worth of, excuse the word, but bitching to us to do, or educating, or whatever, let them do it. I mean, sometimes people just want, you know, those, that extra half hour at a meeting here might save hours later on, because if people don't get it off their chest, they'll get it off one way or another. Alderman Wolf?
I guess the only dilemma I have out of this whole thing is, how do the people underst, they don't even understand, we don't even understand some stuff up here. I mean, how do they even understand what's going on? And if you're fresh new coming in, they're very intimidated, and they have no idea what's going on. And even someone like, like Deb, who was just up here, who's a veteran at doing this, feels that she's getting cut off when she has that little bit more she wants to add to the conversation. So, I have no problem keeping it, I have no problem extending it, I have no problem with anything, I just want to make sure the people understand that they have this opportunity. So, we need to somehow let them know that. So, how do we, how do we do that?
I really think five minutes would, as a guideline, is generous. I mean, that, that's quite, that's quite a speech. And if, you know, like I said, for the most part, unless they're really getting off base, I'm going to let them, I'm going to let them go. Hopefully, I'll set an example and a precedent for future mayors to do the same. But I would rather go air on too long on the policy than too short, and then, you know, have this, well, we're going to give some people an extension and some not, not that I'm saying you're not going to say no to anyone, but, you know, it's policy, you always have that danger. Alderman?
Again, I, I think the discretion of the chair on, but if we have a good number of people apparently here to do something, the chair can make forward statements and say, you know.
That's a good point.
We're going to give you your three minutes, if you really have something important, the chair might give you the pleasure of another 30 seconds or something like that. Giving such a warning, then the person has to make their point. They don't get another five minutes to make one point, or regurgitate everything they've already done, but they, you know, you give them a chance to make that final point they want to make yet. And I think if the chair are seeing a large number present, they can make a statement to that effect as they go into it.
I hear what you're.
Come on, Jeff.
I hear what you're all saying, but sometimes it's just really hard to put all this stuff you're saying down into written language.
Yep.
So, I think a lot of this, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, the, the chair runs the meeting, whether you like it or not, and he has to have control to make sure these things just don't go crazy. And so, I think if you, we somehow put this to allow the discretion of the chair, I think that's going to be the best way I can put this all together to get everything that you guys want in here. You can put a timeline, but that's great.
Because we have one, right? We have a timeline?
Right, but I think then you leave it up to the chair to say, okay, in this particular, because everything, every instance is different, every fact scenario is different. I think somebody has to have the authority to say, okay, you're, now you're just getting way beyond what we're supposed to be talking about, I just, I just got to cut you off. On the other hand, you can say, hey, Ms. Bolton, as an example, what you're saying is really, you know, interesting and important, do you need more time? You can have more time. So, again, I can't put that all down for you, but I think that's kind of what I'm hearing, where you're all going, is that true or not true, or?
I mean, as far as, and as far as getting off subject on it, that has nothing to do with this anyway. Our policy states they got to talk about something on the agenda. I have no problem keeping people focused into that, I've done it for years, so, I mean, the wandering part, if they're going to be talking for five minutes, they're going to be on point.
Was this the, was this a real, oh, sorry.
I just want to make my last point, you know, I like the word friendly, you know, I want to be friendly with, with the people that, that put us up here, and they put us up here for a reason, and, and, and I think we're on that track right now, but we're all on the same, same page on that, we just got to let them know it, that's it.
Could you put no more than five minutes, unless, under the discretion of the chair allows more? You could put a no more then, and then give somebody the right.
That would be good.
You're the guy that, that, that a lawyer's telling us, I'm just kidding, you know, talking and writing and expressing yourself. You guys like that.
Yeah, I'm trying to write it as you guys are talking.
But yeah, whatever, whatever you think would be best.
There's really no rules on this, it's up to you guys, I mean, like law, I'm trying to say. And so, maybe if you crafted it to say, like, no more than five minutes except upon discretion of the chair, that might kind of help.
That'd be good language.
So, do we, we want three, or we want five?
Or whatever, I'm just, yeah, I'm throwing out a number, I don't care what number you pick.
Five, yeah, I like that.
Five is a long time. That's a long.
Well, most people don't need five minutes.
People don't even use it, though.
We're expecting Rick to use discretion often.
Well, that's where, three with discretion, I'm in favor of that, that's a good deal.
Most people won't go five, though, we, you know.
You'd be surprised.
Deb and one or two others might go that long. Suzie, yeah. That's about, that's, they're about the only two.
And if they're on point, the five minutes, the time goes quicker, this is my point.
I think we even had, where people used their time to somebody else, too. So, I don't know if we need to make that part of the, we can put that in there, or what, I, you know, we just got to make it.
I don't, I don't want to make, I don't want to overthink this, and I don't want to overcomplicate it, and that's kind of why I said, just pick a number and throw it out there, but in reality, just trust that I have discretion on it, and if I, I'll be honest, if I started, I or the next mayor, or whoever stops following what your wishes are, it's your duty to bring it back and change it, and enforce it, then tighten it up. But, you know, I kind of, I want to make us approachable, and I think by having a hard number in there, you might have to have it by law, but in practice, just let me go on.
Well, let's let Jeff write it up and see what he comes up with.
Well, we, we already have it. He has, it's in front of us tonight to vote on, so, I mean.
I think if we added the, the comment on, just commenting the discretion, you can leave it at three minutes, I guess, I don't really care, you write the numbers. If it's written in there that the mayor has, the chair has discretion to extend the time as, as needed, I think that gives the, those that are here to make comments, the understanding that they can be given more time if they don't ramble.
So, is that a motion to amend?
Yes, a motion to amend, thank you.
Second. Second.
It was quick. Let's not overthink, that was quick.
I think subject to discretion of the chair, I think I'll be able to fit it in there. It'll just be in that fourth whereas.
All, all in favor of the, the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any other further discussion on this? All those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think we had a motion initially.
Did we, did we bring it to the table?
No.
I thought they both thought over and they.
No, we didn't.
Oh, we just did discussion, yeah.
Just got into discussion.
Boy.
I was supposed to speak.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Kabaki, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, now can you make your motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Yes, stated.
Second.
Alderman Kabaki, seconded. I need a vote on the, on the amendment to the motion.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes?
And just so everybody understands, it's staying at three minutes, right? Is that what we said?
With discretion.
And with the.
With the discretion of the chair.
Okay, got it. Just so, just so everybody's clear on it, okay.
All those in favor of the motion, or the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes unanimously. All right. You need to bring to the table your approval acquisition.
I just asked that, that we just reread that, the expenditure over $50,000, just for the sake of transparency.
Okay. Want to bring it to the table and make that motion? We pulled it off separately, we need to vote on it.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Alderman Wolf.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to new business, review of committee reports.
Public Works and Safety Committee for January 20th, 2020.
So, do we just, do we vote on those, or do we accept them?
No, they just, in case we want to discuss.
All right, moving on, a first reading of ordinance is impossible, second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance number 1445, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Meskigo, A1 to RC1, how do you pronounce it, Pigo?
Pegar.
Pegar, LLC slash Corbor Road, that's the first reading. And then, we don't vote on them separately, do we?
I just wanted to mention something, and these, these were kind of weird because of the whole pandemic situation. These hearings were supposed to have happened a month or two ago. What we did, and we have done this before, and for the council's reminder, any new members, we have the ability, we try not to do it, we don't have to, where normally the order is public hearing, plan commission recommendation, council action. These two rezonings, because the way the schedules were with the hearing getting canceled, but they were already set up to be on a plan commission agenda, the plan commission has already reviewed these, they have both recommended approval on these two rezonings. The question, I guess I want to ask the council is, the way, whenever this happens, where we take them out of order, which I said is very rare, but it, it happens, the way we write those is that if there's any concerns and comments that come up that the council thinks the plan commission needs to reconsider, these can be brought back to plan commission. So, I guess with, with the comments that we're here tonight, one way or the other, should either of these two items go back to plan commission before they go to next council for final action? That would, I guess, the direction I'm. Alderman Wolf?
So, are we, we're not waiving?
No, no.
No, he's just looking for direction if we should send us back to plan.
Plan commission recommended approval for both, but that was before they had the comments.
I haven't heard anything tonight that would, I would think would, but.
Well, we had one, one comment speaker on here.
Are we going to discuss it?
On this particular one, we, we just had the comment from the, from the petitioner. The next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, you're right.
Yeah, the same question applies to both.
Okay, yeah, if you're just doing one, I know.
So, for this first one, no, so.
You just read it, there's no, it's just a first reading.
And then the second, the next ordinance that we're reading is ordinance number 1446, an ordinance to grant a plan development amendment to the approved PD-42 zoning district for Bossy Plan Development. And, and that particular one is, we had a number of, mostly pro, one con. Does it rise to the level of bringing it back to plan commission?
What would, I mean, what would that do specifically?
Put another agenda item on plan commission, but I don't see.
They would just have to review everything they just passed, right?
Because we're either voting it up or down at this point, right?
I didn't see anything brought forward that would.
In the end, this, this group has the final say whether it goes back or not.
I know it's a rare situation, but I wouldn't take it back to plan.
I'm not recommending to.
No, because it'll come to council, and we can discuss it at that point, both of these.
If you wanted the plan commission to weigh in on this, then based on public information.
Because they already weighed in, so.
Correct, but without, they weighed in without having the public hearing. Typically, they would have that information and then weigh in, right?
Yeah, and I want to stress, we, we avoid this, all possible options, it's been very few times it's happened, but.
It's a different world, we understand.
Yeah, that's, that's the bad part, is that people don't know what's going on, that's the only thing, are we really giving them a chance to be informed or not? That's the question we're answering up here right now. So, I don't think it needs to go back to plan, I don't, I don't think, but.
And that's why we have two readings on it, so.
In this case, I see little reason to hold back.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to license approval.
Approval of change of agent for the Class A license held by Walgreens located on Janesville Road to Megan Schrader.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $34,899.05.
Second.
Discussion, hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, utility vouchers.
There are no tax vouchers, motion.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Alderman Hamel. Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.